Okay. Good afternoon. This open meeting of the Board of Appeals is being conducted hybrid pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Town and Nantucket Zoning Board of Appeals is convening in person and by video conference using Zoom as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that some attendees are participating by video conference. All supporting materials provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using posted agenda unless I note otherwise. Okay, so we're going to call it to order. The Town and Nantucket Zoning Board of Appeals' regular monthly meeting today is November 13th, 2025, and it is 1:04 PM. Would someone make a motion to approve the agenda as drafted?
So moved.
Okay, so John Brusher has made the motion. Alisa Allen has seconded. One, two, three, four, five, six. We have six people at the table. All those in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, that carries. Next, we move on to public comment. The public comment section of the meeting is for items that are not on the agenda or contemplated by the board to be discussed today. Is there anyone in the audience or online who has anything to bring up to the board that is not going to be discussed on the agenda today? I see one, yes. Could you just go to the microphone and state your name, and then you can give your comment?
It was attached to an item on the agenda.
Okay, okay. So I would save that then for when we call that item on the agenda. Okay, thank you. Thanks for clarifying. Seeing that there's no one else in the audience who has anything to discuss for public comment, is there anyone online with a hand up for public comment? No, okay, seeing none, we'll move on. So we have approval of the minutes for October 16th, 2025. I read through them, I had no changes. Did anybody have any comments or questions on those?
Nope.
Okay. So I could entertain a motion to approve the minutes as drafted?
So moved.
Second. So John Brusher makes that motion. Lisa Botticelli seconds it. Let's see, we'll just go, I guess, from Jim over. Or is anyone online that's on the board?
No.
Okay, then I'm not going to do roll call, so I'll do Jim over, right? One, two, three, four, five. So all those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we'll move to our first item on the agenda. So we have nine, Hinsdale Road. I see Sarah Alger is here. Were you going to give us an update?
I was not planning on it.
Okay. I saw the building commissioner this morning. He said you guys are working on it, so.
We're like one little by the way.
Okay. So he was inclined to just allow progress to continue, so this is requested to continue to December 11th meeting. The action deadline is December 18th. Could we get a motion to?
So moved.
Okay. Okay, so Lisa's made the motion. Alisa has seconded. I'll do again, Jim over. All those in favor of granting the continuance to the December 11th meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that's continued. Next, we are moving on to application 2025-0024, Mason Gilby, 54R Union Street. Sarah Alger is presenting, so Attorney Alger will give you the floor.
Thank you, Attorney. Sarah Alger for the applicant. Mr. Gilby unfortunately had to be in Boston for a doctor's appointment today, but he sent his mother, Dina, in his stead. And Art Casparo, our engineer surveyor, is here as well. This is an application for a special permit to alter and extend a preexisting nonconforming structure on a preexisting nonconforming lot. This lot was created in 2018 by virtue of an 81L. Mr. Gilby is a year-round resident and is turning this into a place where he can live. It's currently kind of, as you probably know, a ramshackle kind of garage, turning it into a garage apartment, which is allowed under the CN zoning. It's an allowed use. The lot is, of course, nonconforming. It has about 2,611 square feet, or 7,500 square feet are required. It has frontage of 22 feet, where 50 feet is required. The structure itself doesn't meet any of the setbacks. We can't do first-floor living because we're in the flood plain, and we're not allowed to add, we wouldn't be allowed to add a first-floor space without going up, what, nine, 10 feet, something like that, to meet the flood elevation. So it makes more sense to keep the ground floor as it is as a garage and just bump up the second floor for the apartment. And this is where Mr. Gilby is hoping to make his home, and we hope the board would grant the special permit. We believe that it falls squarely within the purview of the board under the special permit standard, not substantially more detrimental, particularly where the goal of zoning is to eliminate nonconformities. The current use is nonconforming. The proposed use would be a conforming use. I don't know if you have any questions, but I'm happy to answer them, as is Dina and Art.
Madam Chair. For you.
Sure, Mr. Mondani.
What's, it's currently nonconforming.
It's a garage.
And that's not allowed in?
Just a garage structure.
Okay.
Allowed without a dwelling, right? Because of accessory use?
Right.
What is the increase of the footprint?
No increase in footprint. We're using the existing footprint.
Okay.
So it's just the second store addition of living space, and it has been approved by the HTC. I included the approved elevations in what was.
May I ask another question?
Question.
The deck is also the new proposed second-floor deck that's outside of any zoning setbacks? It's not clear on the HTC plan. Let me find Art's plan.
Let me look at Art's plan. I think that's outside of the setbacks, correct?
Oh, I see it now. Yeah, it's five feet away.
Like page 13, I think?
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks like it's 5.3 feet.
Yeah, that's right.
And so it's not able to be put, once it's built, it's basically being, it's going to be a new structure?
No, we're keeping, we have, we're keeping, I mean, it will essentially be a new structure, but.
Yeah, so it can't be put within the setbacks when it becomes a new structure? And is it on a slab?
It's on a slab, and we're hoping to continue to use that same slab. Are you going to keep those first-floor walls of that existing garage? Yes, so they're keeping the existing structure.
But it can't be, for any reason, can't be put within the setbacks?
I mean, it'd be hard to move, I think.
It would be really hard to move it and make it go within the setbacks. And the slab is there, so we'd like to retain the existing slab.
At that point, it would become a demo in a new build, and then you wouldn't be here.
Right. We don't want a demo.
Right. Yeah, because you can't move the slab.
Right.
So then you're saving four walls.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you.
So how would you characterize the structure right now? What is it deemed? What is its use?
It's a garage.
You want to see the picture?
Okay. Which is not, okay, which is not allowed in?
Not all, not standing on its own, no.
I guess.
A retail store would be allowed.
I think that's what, my understanding is that's what was there at one point, an antique store.
Oh, really?
Yeah, the prior owners may have, may have had an antique store there at some point.
I just, it's more hoops to jump through when we go through these 4181Ls, right? Because you created the second lot.
We didn't.
No, I know you didn't, sorry. It was.
It was created.
Approval not required.
Right. We didn't create it. The prior owner created this, approval not required. Mr. Gilby bought this particular piece.
Right, which, that is by right.
Correct.
And now there's a structure on one side that it makes some pretty big changes to, and it created, I think, more nonconformities, did it not?
No.
Okay.
No, and I don't think any changes have been made to this structure yet.
Right, right.
Our proposed changes, we're not creating any new nonconformities. We're not even extending, what is that, laterally? We're going up. So the, to the extent the nonconformity is getting increased, it's just by the virtue of the second story.
And the building, so it's not a commercial building? I guess I'm just, it's not a commercial building?
No.
Right? It's a garage.
It's on a slab.
So you'll actually be making it more conforming to the, in the use? Because it'll be used as a residential?
Yeah, from a zoning perspective. I know the interesting thing with the 81L is that you can take a lot and then create a nonconformity by creating a lot that has a building that isn't allowed by zoning.
Right, but it's, but once you get that designation, it's automatically deemed preexisting nonconforming.
I know, it's just sort of a.
It's a weird, that's why I'm having a more difficult time finding.
Yeah, it's totally weird, but I think if it, just having the garage on it makes it more nonconforming, so putting a residence in there will, will.
Make it more conforming. The only issue is it increases density, obviously, by taking a building that was not habited and, you know, then making it habitable.
Yeah.
But that's maybe not, you know, that's, that's just an issue with the way that the bylaw reads.
But I don't think.
Or is able to be used.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if there's anything we can do about that.
Did we receive any mail on this one?
I believe the people here to my left.
Oh, well, yeah. People in the audience, yep. Okay.
And, you know, the nice thing about this, honestly, was for Mr. Gilby, who's young, how old is he?
Twenty-seven.
He's 27. It was an opportunity for him to buy something affordable, not subject to a covenant, that he could make his home and experience maybe some appreciation over time, et cetera, so it's kind of a nice thing for him.
Do you, either of you, Art, or do you have anything that you want to add? No? Okay.
Couple more questions.
Okay, I'm sorry. So the board has a couple more questions, and then we'll go to, we'll go to you.
I'm just trying to understand it better, that's all.
Okay, sorry.
So the, it's not, there's no impervious surface requirement, 20% on the land, because it's not deemed commercial?
Yeah. No, there wouldn't be an open area requirement, and we also have a filing at the same time with the Conservation Commission pending, just so that you're aware, because of the flood zone.
Okay.
And that's the real issue, is the land subject to coastal storm flowage. We've got surface elevations about five and a flood zone elevation of eight in this area. So that's the real challenge of why the second story is needed for the residential use.
Okay.
Do you have any more, anyone else on the board have any further questions for the applicant before we go to the audience? No? Okay, seeing none. If you could just identify yourself and your address, that would be great, thank you.
My name is Herschel Allerhand. I live on 47 Union Street. Normally, I would be against any change where a person buys a property with the explicit intention of asking for a change. You bought it, you bought it for what it is, and the price reflects what the zoning is. But in this case, I don't have an objection based on a specific promise that this is going to be for residence and not for rental. I don't know whether you can, how you can make this stick or whether it'd be part of the record. We live on Union Street, as is now. People walk by our house every night in the summer screaming and yelling at 12 o'clock, and we've seen people actually sleep in our home. And if this becomes a rental, we're just going to add more people coming down that street. So I have no objection if it's a matter of record, and I say this without any disrespect. I don't want to hear weasel words like saying, "At this point, we have no plans." What I would like to hear is saying, "This property will not become a rental."
Okay. I don't know if the applicant is prepared to speak to that, but I don't, I don't know that we can condition it on that as it's not restricted and the residential use is the allowed use.
We're in a commercial zone.
You're strictly in a commercial zone?
Yes, C and D.
Okay.
Well, it may not be legally enforceable, but I would like to hear it from a person that purchased it to make it a public record that this is not going to become a rental.
So in the new article that was just passed at town meeting, was rental was allowed in CN or not allowed in CN? I'm trying to remember the chart.
Billy, can you chime in on that?
Because it was allowed in every district except for, oh, maybe it was CI, okay. Oh, was it right in front of me and I'm not? Oh, no. Maybe it was, maybe it was just CI.
Can I suggest?
Okay.
We have one more person with hands raised on the.
Okay.
May I just make one comment on that last comment?
Sure, and then we'll go to the person online.
Okay. You do realize that a person who's a guest at that house, the person living at that house, or someone who might be renting that house, they all have the same ability to be loud and have a party, and you're going to hear their voices, no matter if they're renters, homeowners, or guests? So.
Of course I realize that.
I think your intention is discriminatory, the intention of your request is discriminatory.
Well, sometimes discriminatory makes sense. Sometimes you have to make discriminations. But there is a difference in our experience between people who live on this island and have a stake in this island and have to face their neighbors. Generally, they're not the problem. The problem is people who never stepped foot on the island and rent out their house.
Well, there are noise ordinances for stuff like that. There are laws to address, you know, loud noises and things like that. I feel like the nature of what you're asking is discriminatory, and I don't think that's fair.
Oh, so we disagree. I believe that it is fair to discriminate.
And it's not enforceable, frankly, so.
Well, it's probably not. I just want to make it a matter of record, otherwise I would object to this change because we certainly don't need more rentals on this area to have, the whole Union Street is pockmarked with this kind of.
Rentals are allowed on Nantucket now.
Okay.
I think we're getting off topic.
Yeah, I agree. Let's, let's move on to the, to, yeah, let's move on to the.
I'm just addressing his rental comment.
Okay. Let's hear from the person who's online, and then we'll hear if Billy gets back to us about what the chart says.
Hi. Will McDonough here. I'm the immediate neighbor. My house is 54 Union Street. It's about 10 feet from this structure, and I wanted to let you know that I fully support this young man. I think he's going to do beautiful things to the property. He'll be a year-round tenant and contribute to Nantucket, and I'm proud of him and supportive of him.
Okay, thank you for your support or your comments. Okay, back to the audience. Did you want to get up and just identify yourself at the microphone, please?
Hello, I'm Liz Coffin Allerhand. I live at 47 Union. And as this process has started, we were left, I was left in some confusion because I first heard about it too late to talk at the HTC, but the plans that were shown and approved had two double bedrooms on the first floor. Now, apparently, that no longer pertains. I had been concerned that you were now creating a freestanding residential structure in lieu in a commercial zone, which was problematic to me. If it's not to the zoning board, that's fine, but I wanted to speak up about the nature of what's happening in that commercial zone, so that you'd be apprised going forward that the changes that you're being asked to determine are going to have cumulative effect on all of us. This is the, oh, and the other thing is, in, just as an aside, I could not tell from the revised plan whether the garage door, so-called, is indeed large enough for a vehicle. I can't, I couldn't tell. But it's, it's to the point because you've changed or look forward to changing what was called a garage warehouse. It had a storage function, had a very strong storage function. I was in it, inside of it, in the 19, late 90s, early 2000, and it was a lovely garage warehouse structure. Nothing the matter with it doing a great, with the possibility of doing a great job of work. However, in the desire to change it, which is the use change to a residential structure, you're going to alter the neighborhood. And the neighborhood is under a lot of stress from the increased traffic flow and development. So unlike those of us who have been living in the neighborhood, I'm a 30-year resident, the social problems that have been developing have sort of come to us. But you are now being asked to introject into this zone what could possibly contribute to further problems. So it's a different, it has a different moral and ethical standing, as far as I'm concerned. Now, the other, the other thing I wanted to let you know about was the nature of the traffic, because this young man is now going to have to back out into one of the most heavily traveled portions of the island. This is the area between Conso Springs, the duck pond, and where they took out that house so you could make the curve onto Francis. What happens there is that all of the traffic that's on its way, all of your supply rigs, everything that is being carted into the island comes through there and goes out there. And in order for these big truck divers, who are actually magnificent, but they're under quite a burden, because they're 60 feet long, 60 feet long rig is going to absolutely shut off Mr. Gilby's ability to get into his house. And the rigs get stopped there. And why do they get stopped there? Because everything has to slow down enough to make the turn.
So I, we all experience or have experienced when that happens. I understand your point. I do think the plan that was provided shows that he does have the ability to do a turn so he can come out, not have to back out onto, onto Union Street from his driveway, which would not be preferred, you know, but other people do have to do that. So this is, looks like they've, they've taken that into account. I just want to clarify that in the commercial neighborhood, the CN zone, a garage apartment isn't allowed use. So it's, we're not, it's not that the zoning board doesn't, I can't recall the exact word you used, but it's not that we're, we're saying that it's, it's okay to make this change. It's in the code that this, that this structure is allowed. It's allowed to be a garage. It's also, or it is an existing garage, which is preexisting nonconforming, but it can be, the living can be added on top of it. And it does appear that it still is going to have storage on the first floor, and the plans that were modified and approved, just to clarify, and Art or Sarah, please correct me if I'm wrong, but it looks like there's one, it's a one-bedroom apartment on the second floor with storage and one garage bay on the first floor.
No, it's, it's a better plan for the, for the welfare of the whole neighborhood, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay.
But I, what I'm trying to get around to telling you, so I can be brief and sweet, is since you all know how difficult this stretch of the traffic is, because actually, we're now all driving past the facade of the little house that got blown down, covered with Tyvek now. Every curve along this way is now more subject, I'm not saying it's going to happen, but it's more subject to safety issues.
Okay, well, this property is, I'm not trying to fight with you, but this property is pretty far, set far back, so I don't, I don't think there's a concern of someone running into it. If that's, I mean, I can't, we can't, I understand your concern about the, the traffic pattern of the neighborhood, but I don't think this property.
Right, it doesn't, what I'm, but I started the discussion trying to explain to you that I'm aware that you can't do anything about it, but I want you to be aware of the fact that cumulative decisions that you're going to make will indeed change the nature of this already compromised part of the town. And it's not as if it's just us. We're talking about the entire town.
So I'm imagining this is the, the issue that you were saying was maybe for public comment, but sort of tied to one of the applications?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly.
So I, and I think all the board and everyone in the audience can appreciate the concerns about the traffic and congestion on Nantucket. The zoning board, we, if this, this isn't allowed use and will make this structure more conforming in the neighborhood, so for our purposes, we, our directive under the bylaw is always to try to help get things in a more conforming status.
Right, but you're, you're doing it at a cost.
So, well, I might, I might agree with you on some applications, but I think that your concerns about traffic are warranted. However, maybe there's, there's a better, there's a, there's more impactful boards to also present this information to, that are making more island-wide decisions. And I understand what you're saying, that we, every decision we make does create an impact, and that is true, but we don't have the power to cumulatively affect in one decision. We just do lot by lot. So I think there are some other boards that maybe would be better suited to hear these overarching neighborhood concerns.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, anytime.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
A few more comments.
Sure.
Questions for Sarah. And I'm kind of struggling with, with these things. They're kind of esoteric, but we, this was one lot, and then it goes through this special subdivision. And then it goes through this special subdivision, which creates two non-conforming lots. And so it's a little different than, by right, you would not be able to do this, right? If you start.
Well, by.
And you can't have this structure on that lot, I'm being told, because it's a garage. And a garage would need to go through the planning board to get its deemed a single structure. So we're changing, we're changing a lot of things here. And I know it's going toward a, maybe a good end. But we are changing, they are changing things substantially, I think.
Can I respond to that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, sorry.
It's a question, sorry.
Yeah, so the garage is pre, we can have the garage there. It's a pre-existing, non-conforming garage. So we can have the garage there. We couldn't create a garage there on its own if it didn't already exist, because it's not an allowed use. But because it does exist, it can continue to exist as a pre-existing, non-conforming structure. I think I've messed you up, right? Okay. The traffic situation isn't going to change because if you were operating this as a retail store, which isn't allowed to use, it would be much more intense. If you're doing it as a garage, it's going to be the same people going in and out if it's a garage or a residence. Our original plan did have some living space on the first floor. And then we realized that because we were in the floodplain, we couldn't do it. So we revised the plan. That may have created some initial confusion. I know that both Deana Gilby and Mason spent considerable time with the Allerhans going over the plans, talking to them about the neighborhood, and trying to be good neighbors. And I think Mason will be a good neighbor. He works for Nantucket Marine, I think, right? Yeah.
With who?
Nantucket Marine. So it is, it's a pretty simple little structure. We add the second-floor apartment, make the use conforming.
And there, I have one question, if I may, Madam Chair. You're showing dormers on the roof, is that, but that's just to get light in? There's no third-floor plan here.
No third-floor plan, no.
So those dormers are just for light?
Correct.
And just from a building code perspective, I'm seeing a lot of windows that are very close to property lines where you probably can't put in windows because of fire separation. But that's not a, that's not anything that we can waive. That's a building department issue.
Correct.
So, but just an FYI.
Some of the, some of the windows currently exist.
No, but on the second floor, like the kitchen windows are a triple, you know, the building's less than a foot away from the property line. I mean, you can put in fire suppression screens that come down if there's a fire, but there are codes about proximity of the last two property lines because of fire spreading.
Correct.
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions for the applicant?
Madam Chair.
Or is there anyone online? Yep.
I just wanted to mention, sorry, that Billy Saad has his hand raised.
Oh, sure. All right, let's hear from Billy.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I didn't hear you all earlier when you had a question, but I think it was with regards to what zoning districts, maybe, were allowed short-term rentals at a town meeting?
Yes.
So luckily, since I'm in my office, I actually have the warrant right here. I may not be able to see it. But the only zoning district that's an N is CI. Everywhere else, it's listed as a Y.
Okay, thank you for confirming that.
Thank you.
Okay, so anyone else have anything they want to say?
Just one thing about the frontage. So the frontage is just a normal ask of getting around the 50-foot.
That happened with the 4181L.
Yeah, that's already pre-existing, non-conforming. So we're not asking for that.
I mean, I think that's, you know, the hard, and that's why Emily Molden came in with that bylaw change to ask for further relief when people want to do a 4181L. Because it's not just creating two separate lots. It's allowing you to take, to create more density. And, you know, unfortunately, it didn't pass by two votes or something. But I think that those are the issues that you're bringing up, is that all of a sudden, there's this lot that this building is only non-conforming, existing non-conforming, because a lot was created that doesn't mean zoning.
Well.
But, and not, and it's not, you know.
But it's also pre-existing, non-conforming, because it was built on the lot line.
Oh, and from that perspective, yes. I'm talking about, yeah, I'm talking about use.
So in terms of density, I would just say that we're really not increasing the density with this particular 4181L. All we're doing is allowing the separate ownership of the two structures. Because if they had remained together, this could have become a garage apartment for the existing dwelling, or it could have become an ADU or a second dwelling. There are all, so I don't.
But the lot would be bigger.
The lot would be bigger.
That's fine.
But the density would be the, would be essentially the same.
Well, in this circumstance, there's no real way that they could ever get another second dwelling on this other lot.
No.
But they could put a second dwelling potentially on Lot B. But that's not before us, so.
No.
Okay.
Quick question. The house that this garage used to be on the same lot with, is there currently an application to do anything with that existing house?
No, that's Mr. McDonough's property, I think.
I think, is that next door, or is that?
56 Union's on the right, right, the restaurant?
Yeah, we've got the elegant dump.
Yep.
It has a throwback. Great Harbor Yacht Club now.
Yep.
Then you have this going toward town.
Yep.
This structure. Then you have what I believe is Mr. McDonough's house.
Okay.
And then you have another house on the corner, I think.
Yep.
Emily Avery's old house.
Yeah.
Okay. So does anyone else have any questions for the applicant? No. Is there anyone else online who had anything to say? No. Anyone in the audience have anything else to say? No. Okay. So the, for the, do we want to close the public hearing then and deliberate?
Sure. I have one more question, just because I can't read the dimension.
Okay.
Just out of curiosity. Sarah, do you know what the total height is to the ridge on this structure?
Art's going to look that up.
Yeah, the dimensions don't come through on the, the new proposed height. It's in here. You don't have the COA, do you? Because I might have it on that. Oh, here it is. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we have it, it's page.
Yeah.
Yeah, what does it say? What did they ask for the height? It says, oh, this is the COA. That was an amendment, so I don't think it lists it. Because it says no change, so.
Let me see if I put it in the.
Because what is the, is CN, CN is 30 feet still? Or is that 35? Which zone is 35 feet in height?
I have it, I just, I, my eyes are so bad, I can't read it.
I mean, is it over, is it?
25-1, 25 feet, 1 inch.
Okay.
Thanks.
Does that?
Yeah, that answers my question.
Okay, so would, we could entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Can I just remind you of the standard before you do that?
Yeah.
For the special permit is finding that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's in your staff report.
It is, yep.
I'll make that motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, so Lisa makes the most motion, John seconds. We'll go Jim over, okay? So all those in favor, say aye. Close the public hearing? Okay. All right, so we can deliberate. So the finding, if we, you know, we always make a motion and the positive. So the finding would be that granting the proposed relief pursuant to bylaw, Section 13933A 1A, is consistent with the finding that the proposed alterations are not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing, non-conforming structure to the neighborhood and are within the spirit and intent of the bylaw. Suggested conditions are that the proposed alterations and expansion shall be in substantial compliance with the proposed conditions shown upon Exhibit A. The project shall be completed in substantial conformity with the plans approved in connection with Certificate of Appropriateness, number HDC 2025-09-13302. There shall be no further alterations or expansion of the structure without further relief from this board. And there shall be no exterior construction allowed between Memorial Day and Labor Day of any given year for the work contemplated herein. So those are suggested conditions with that finding, if that is how we want to move forward. Does anyone have any comments? No.
Yeah, I just want to make this comment because, and this kind of goes to all my questions and my problem, because we have this 4181L, which is kind of a loophole, right? That we're the only town, I think, in Massachusetts that allows this. And I just think to then come forward to the, to the board to ask for your normal special permit is kind of changing things around by using this loophole. And I think we just need to, I don't know, have more scrutiny in our review of this. And I know it's going to a member of the community, and I'm partial to boatyard mechanics. But he can turn around and sell it tomorrow. So you can't, you can't look at it that way. It's also going up, the massing is getting more. And none of this would be allowed, per se, if we were one of the other towns in Massachusetts that don't allow this. And it's fine if the, if the structure wants to stay the way it is on the property and not really change the use and the massing and all that. But I don't know. And we're, you know, I'm hearing some objection from neighbors, even though there's some support. That's so. And the more detrimental part, I don't know, is massing more detrimental to a neighborhood? Even though it's being improved and there's going to be water views and decks and stuff? You know, I guess it's, I don't, I still don't know what our standard for more detrimental is. I guess it's subjective. But we've seen this in Codfish Park, where they were going up and it didn't seem to jive with a lot of members on a more detrimental. That's all.
Any further discussion, or would someone care to make the motion?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the relief as requested with the conditions set forth in the staff memo. Let me read them.
Okay, and we'll have the same five vote, who voted on closing the public hearing. So we don't need to do roll call, I don't believe, so. Oh, sorry, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, so John made the motion and Alisa seconded. Voting members are Jim, Lisa, Susan, John, and Alisa. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, so three to two. And that carries, yes? Oh, no? For special permit?
No.
Can we make a motion to reconsider?
Sure.
Okay, I'm going to put out that motion.
I'll second it.
All right, so motion to reconsider our vote. Well, sorry, yeah, motion to reconsider our vote. So Lisa made the motion, Jim seconded, so same five. All those in favor of reconsidering our vote, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. So John, do you want to make the motion again?
Sure, we'll make the, make the motion to approve the relief as requested as set forth in the staff memo.
Okay. With the conditions.
And can I say one thing on the motion?
Yes.
You know, I'm struggling with it from Jim's perspective as well because of the 4181L. But I do think that this is a reasonable ask. I just wish that there were more constraints around the 4181L. And I don't really understand why, like Jim said, we're the only town that allows this to take place. So that was my concern about it. And I thought it was a 3-2 vote, so I thought it was going to carry without me. So I'm in, I'll second it.
Okay, so the motion has been made and seconded. And again, the voting board is Jim, Lisa, Susan, John, and Alisa. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, so that is four to one, that carries. Okay. Thank you.
We should come back with another.
Two, okay. So John is recused for the next two. And Lisa, are you recused for one of these?
I am the next one.
From 25?
I am from 6, Tatimo.
You're on, right. I don't know, hold on. Alisa, you're out on Tatimo.
Yep.
What did you say, Monahan's is getting continued, a request to be continued? And then you're out on 72 and 6.
Yeah, I would be out.
And John is also out on 25. Okay. So our next one is 2025. Well, first of all, thank you applicants and neighbors on 54, our union. And our next application is 2025-0025, McKay and Fanaf, trustees of the McKay Fanaf Family Trust, 25 Monahan's Road. Sarah Elger represents, they have requested to continue to the December 11th meeting. Okay, all right. So would someone make a motion to allow that continuance? So Alisa and Jim make that motion. So we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. So all five sitting at the table, 1, 2, 3, 4, yeah, are voting. So all those in favor of granting that continuance, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, so that carries. So we will either, we'll hear something from them before, or we'll be at the December 11th meeting. Okay. Thank you. Our next application is 2025-0022, Robert K. and Catherine C. Hatcher, 72 Baxter Road. Lisa, Botticelli, and John Brusher are recused from this one. And Attorney Arthur Reed is presenting, and he is on Zoom. And we have Ray Poll in the audience as well for this one, right? And you as well, Art Gasparo? Okay.
You ready, Madam Chair?
Yep, all ready, the floor is yours.
Okay. Thank you very much. For the record, Attorney Arthur Reed, representing the applicants in this case, Robert and Catherine Hatcher, the property of 72 Baxter Road in Sconcee. And this is an application to alter the pre-existing, non-conforming single-family structure upon the, upon the locus by increasing the height in a, of a portion of the structure and by including a new unenclosed porch. A new foundation will be placed under the structure. The property is pre-existing, non-conforming lot of record, containing about 7,623 square feet. And it is non-conforming with regard to front and side yard setbacks. The, it's 14.9 feet from the easterly boundary, 3.7 feet from the northerly boundary, and 5 feet from the southerly lot line. The maximum permitted ground cover for a lot of record in this SR 20 district is 1,500 square feet. The existing ground cover is 1,820 square feet. That is not going to change. Actually, there was, the amount of ground cover on the lot was changed in a previous application, it was actually reduced. So in any event, it's over, but not as, not as far over as it originally was. The proposed alterations, as I said, will involve a new foundation, the addition of the second story and a portion of the structure. All the work will be done within the existing footprint. No new non-conformity will be created. The only thing that would be, that would be requiring us to go before the board is the fact that we are going up in. the fact that we are going up, including a portion of the structure that is within the setback areas. We have HDC approval. The result of this will be that no new non-conformity will be created, and the existing setbacks and ground cover will remain the same. As you know, this matter had been before you, a previous application which was withdrawn. I was not involved in that application. I've come into the situation more recently. And I think there had been some confusion at the last meeting about the fact that there was an early decision back in, I think, 1973 or '74, in which the Board of Appeals had issued a decision that contained language saying that there could be no further structural alterations upon the property. Now, the usual language that's contained in a ZBA decision, as you well know, and as you've done many times, is no further alterations of the structures on the lot without further relief from this board. And that wasn't the language that was used back in 1974. So when they came back in 1993 for an alteration, they actually asked that that language be stricken from the decision, removed from the decision, and at that time, the Board of Appeals removed that language. So that at the present time, there is in fact no outstanding prohibition in any ZBA decision that would prevent any alterations to the structure. So with that, I think we've met the standard for the allowance of a special permit here. We're not increasing any non-conformity. We're not creating a new non-conformity. And as far as the standard for relief under those circumstances, it is that it not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And I have a hard time finding, I would think you would have a hard time finding, that it would be in any way substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Obviously, we can get into any other questions that you have. As noted, Ray Poll is here, as is Art Gasparo, with any further, able to answer any further questions that you may have. And that basically is the presentation that I would like to make. Thank you.
Arthur, can you contrast the, the neighbor's concern, Mr. and Mrs. Golden at 70 Baxter Road, about the 1993?
Yeah.
About this will not add a second story?
That was, that's taken out, completely out of context, actually. If you take a look at the decision that he's citing, that is contained in the description of the relief that is requested, not as, not as a condition of the Board. The description of what was being proposed in that 1993 application says, "Applicants proposed alter the dwelling within the existing footprint of the structure but will not add a second story." That was simply a description of what they were applying for, not a condition that was being applied by the Board. In the conditions, it says quite appropriately, "The structure shall be a single-story structure." Right, that's exactly what they were applying for. So I think that that language, as I say, is misleading as stated. It is, it was not a condition applied by the Board, and in any event, was applicable in that application because that's what was being applied for. Nothing in there would in any way prohibit our requesting relief that would involve putting a second story on the structure. I would also point out that the neighbor in question bought the property in 2000, I believe. It had a, a single-story structure on it at that time, their property next door, which is also a non-conforming lot. And the following year, they demolished that structure, which was, again, pretty similar to the, to the house that's on our lot, and replaced it with a two-story structure, which they now have. It's a very attractive building that they have, and it's, and it has two stories, so I'm a little bit surprised to hear them suggest that putting a two-story structure on an undersized lot in this neighborhood is in some way detrimental to the neighborhood.
Mr. Poll or Mr. Gasparo, do you have anything to add at this point?
I'm just here to, Ray Poll, for the record. I'm only here to answer any questions regarding the architecture and the HDC process, if you have any. Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question.
Okay.
How, how much additional living space is being created? About, I mean, you know?
I think, I think Art has the exact.
Okay.
I'll give Gasparo for the record. Within the setback, it's 263 square feet. I didn't calculate the.
Well, no, the to, the total of the.
I'd have to, I'd take a minute to.
Well, just, you know.
Well, if that was 400 on a.
400 plus the 263 or?
No.
400 total?
In aggregate total, yeah. And the only thing I would add is, is that while it's going up, we did include on the plan, the, the delta of the increase is about a six-foot change in the ridge.
Ah, yeah.
Thank you.
And specifically, the, we're not increasing the height to a point above the 30 feet allowed under the bylaw. We're nowhere close to that. We're going to what, approximately 22 feet or?
That's correct.
Does the Board have any questions, more additional questions? No. Is there anyone in the audience who wanted to speak about this one or online? Yes, okay, so could we go to the person online?
Susan Golden, you're free to speak.
Thank you. I'm Susan Golden. I live at 70 Baxter Road. We bought our house over 25 years ago. And contrary to what Mr. Reed said, our houses, our structures on our property are completely conforming with the setbacks. We are not in violation the way the housing structures are on 72 Baxter Road. And that is the big difference here. It is such a dense property right now, it's going to become ever more so. And the concern you should all be considering is that if you approve this, every house on Baxter Road is going to think they can build to the property lines and not have to comply with setbacks. And I think a terrible precedent is being set. It will be noise, it will be lack of air. I mean, you're, you're proposing structures that already are very close to these property lines. So we are very concerned about this. And the recommendation in 1993 that was discussed at the prior board meetings said it will not add a second story, and, and they're very clear about that. So I don't understand why, once a mistake was made by allowing setbacks not to be observed, are going to continue 25 and plus years later.
Okay, thank you.
What was Arthur's reasoning behind the 1972 restriction of not going up? What was his?
There wasn't a restriction, per se. It was the, that application was for a single-story addition. And the language that's being cited in the neighbor's email is the language describing the application, which is that it would be a, that it would not have a second story. And the condition which stated, yeah, you've, you've got that up there in front of you.
He just, uh?
Now, the, the condition was that the, it would be a single-story addition, and once again, that's exactly what was being applied for, a second-story addition. That's, that's a different decision that you have up on the screen right now. It's the decision you had, I think you had it up a minute ago. It's the decision, let's see, it's the, the book and page as recorded is Book 411, Page 119. The language in paragraph one, about two-thirds of the way down, says, "Applicants propose to alter the dwelling within the existing footprint of the structure but will not add a second story." I think, once again, they're describing what they're applying for. They were proposing a one-story addition at that time. And then the condition says, "The structure shall be a single-story structure." Well, that, again, that ties to what they were applying for at that time. In no way did it say, "There shall never be a second story on this structure."
And this second story structure.
Non-conforming structure, it's always been a non-conforming structure as a result of it being pre-existing of zoning. It's had changes since that time, but the setback, non-conformities has at the present time are all pre-existing, non-conforming grandfathered.
So when was it built? When was it built, Arthur?
The house?
Yeah. Ray answered, in 1930, he said.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so, yeah, right, so, so it was, it's a long time pre-existing, non-conforming. Reading the decision, as Arthur has explained, I agree, that what, what was, there's two diff, what's described in the, the ask versus the conditions are, are separate. If, if the condition said, you know, "There shall not be a second story," then it's, then the Board at that time specifically prohibited that going forward. That would be instructive to us going forward. Someone asking for something doesn't, and saying in the ask, it's, they're not asking for a second story, doesn't, in my mind, does not preclude them from asking for a second story or.
Again, yeah.
Or anything else that wasn't asked for in the application the first time to be asked for later, unless the Board specifically prohibited it.
Okay, thank you for clearing that up. And one follow-up, the, the second story that is being added is in the area that is not within the setback.
It's partially within the setback and partially outside the setback.
But not increasing the, but not increasing the footprint?
Yeah.
Right.
But, but, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And Jim, you had a question?
I have too. I just want to follow up with the neighbor, someone she could answer, someone else. Is that non-conform, is that property non-conforming in any other way?
Which one, 70 or 72?
72. And it, or is she just referring to the setback? That's.
I think she was saying that there was a mistake that was allowed to be continued, but the property being built in 19.
No, she was, she was describing her property. And I'm just trying to understand, it's not non-conforming in any way?
Which, which property? You mean the neighbor's property? The neighbor's property is, is undersized. It's, I assume that meets the setbacks since they built this new house with zoning requirements in place, but the lot is between 15,000 and 16,000 square feet, 20,000 being the minimum in this district, so it's a non-conforming lot.
Okay, from a size standpoint. And then, Ms. Poll, I just question about, from a, this is great, because we have it here from, as an HDC person. Do you, in terms of, you know, when we look at this substantial or detrimental to the neighborhood, do you all look at neighbor structures to, to make that determination that this might be, you know, set off something that'll change the neighborhood?
So, can everyone hear me, by the way?
Does my question make sense?
Oh, it totally does. So I'm answering this particular question, not with respect to this one application, but wearing my HDC hat. And as I'm sure you're all aware, the HDC takes context in, completely into consideration. Something that's approvable on, say, Union Street wouldn't necessarily be approvable in Maticet. So context is everything, and I think that the reason that the HDC embraced the particular scheme that we have approved that, that was up on the Board is because I think if you drive down Baxter Road, a majority of the houses there are actually two stories, not one story. So this would certainly be within, you know, the context of Baxter Road where, you know, that is not a big building when you drive down Baxter Road. We have everything from, you know, the really huge two-story and three-story structures on Baxter Road, and then the smaller buildings like this. So yes, context is certainly taken into consideration. Thank you.
Okay.
I, I want to address something that the neighbor mentioned, and it, I think it matters. If you blow up Page 5 and you really look at this piece of property, it's very, very dense. There's a lot going on on this property. There's a lot of structures, there's a pool, there's a planter in the middle of the backyard, and there's just, this is densely developed, this lot, and do we think that adding, what we're adding is going to even make it more intense? It just seems like there's a lot going on on this property, and, and by going up on the front of it does add to the density within, within this lot itself. I think that should just be considered. Thank you.
If, if I may, I don't think that that's really the way that density is measured under our bylaw. Basically, we're dealing with a limitation on height, which is 30 feet, and we're dealing with a limitation on ground cover. Those are the factors that determine the extent of what can be built upon the lot. And once again, we are over the ground cover. As I mentioned, if you look at the early decisions, the ground cover on this lot was over 2,200 square feet originally. And as a result of alterations that were made in connection with applications that were done in the past, the amount of ground cover on the property was reduced to the present 1,550 for the main house and 270 for the studio structure, which was added, replacing an old garage that had existed. So now you've got 1,820 square feet. Yes, that's more than the 1,500 that would be, that is the limit for the undersized lot of record, but not greatly so. And once again, we're not doing anything that is going to increase either the ground cover or, or put the height over the amount that's permitted under the bylaw.
Madam Chair, could I just respond to, to your question? Because we, we kind of ran into this on the last case where, and I wasn't aware of this, that height doesn't mean density, more density? Just means more massing?
I maybe used the wrong word.
Yeah.
Maybe I used the wrong word. Just, just more.
Yeah.
Just more.
Right.
So I kind of, so I kind of felt, I kind of didn't think, like, wasn't thinking along those lines, so I thought, you know, I mean, it looks, this plan looks kind of busy because there's all these lines and stuff all over, but the pool, planter, and patio pergola, those are, you know, pool and the patio are flat to the ground. You've got the 37, 35 rather shed, little shed. I don't, I don't, I didn't feel like, I feel like if it was looking at a picture of it maybe versus the plan with all the lines on it, I don't think it, it is that dense. Or I, I'm not in the terms of density, but in the terms of, of massing and stuff on the lot, so.
They're going to have 400 square feet more of living space.
Yeah.
To me, that's substantial. It's a substantial increase. What's that, three, three bedrooms, maybe?
I don't know if we have fuller plans. I don't know if we have floor plans.
Twenty by, twenty by twenty?
Yes, please, sorry.
You know, the 20 by 20 includes the eve space, you know, where the building goes down.
So, it's not usable?
You can't really, you know, stand up in the entire second floor that we're raising up, just to be clear.
And it's just that one section over the-
Also, the planter is going away.
The planter's going away. Okay. So, it's just, I mean, if you're, I'm looking on Page 9 for the elevations. It's just, the part going up is just, on the top, right, is just that section on the right?
I don't know.
Yeah, you scroll down, or you'll see it.
Page 10.
So, I was on Page 9, but
Oh, this is Page 3.
Oh, maybe, I don't know. Mine says Page 10 on my, but, whatever. Page 10 for me is floor plans.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, just a question for-
Sure.
Paul. The, just, if I'm reading the plan correctly, the the raised portion of the building, does that abut the neighbor? Is that on that side?
Yeah. The part that we're adding, you know, going up on, is closest to the neighbor that's spoken. Ms. Golden.
Madam Chair?
Mm-hmm.
Susan Golden does have her hand raised.
Okay, let's go back to, to her at this point.
Hi. Just to be clear, from the, from the second floor of our house, there will now be complete blockage of sunlight, of air. This isn't, we were assured when we purchased our house, and we built within the appropriate setbacks. None of these structures have been built within appropriate setbacks. That makes all the difference for density, and for living, and for noise. And I can't even imagine what it would be like to go through construction so close to our property line in so many ways. You're going below, you're raising up. It was not intended. And I also just wanted to correct Mr. Reed. We did not destroy the existing structure that was in our house. We donated it, and it was moved in and exists in Sconsetown another lot. We are very committed Sconset citizens, and we have complied in every way with the feeling and the regulations of Sconset. And to me, this house has never, and we, when we purchased our property in 2000, we were assured there would be no new structures. And this just doesn't feel right.
So, so, I just, thank you for your comment. New construction has to conform to zoning setbacks. This is a pre-existing, non-conforming structure, so it's apples and oranges. I don't know who assured you that the, of the neighbor would not ever build anything, but that, I don't know who told you that, but I, there, I don't know why they said that. Art, it looks to me that the one-story structure, the 270-square-foot structure, that does not have any setback violations, does it? That I can see on the plan? So, the only, it's the, the pre-existing, non-conforming structure is the main house that was built in 1930. Correct? Okay. Does any, Art, did you have something you wanted to add, since you're at the mic?
Yes, if I could, I would just like to address the comment about the blocking of air. I don't have an exact distance to the, to the neighbor's house, but there's a, their neighbor's driveway is in between our house, the locusts and and their house. I have an aerial that's blown up I could hand out, if that would be helpful.
That would be helpful.
You've got that there. I had, before I come, I had prepared this with respect to the sightlines to the, to the lighthouse. I don't think that's, you know, at issue here, but I think it does pretty clearly show the separation distance between the, the two houses. And I just failed to see how there would be a blocking of air.
Okay, thank you. So, yes, so, I'm, I'm looking at the town in Nantucket, GIS. So, 72 and 70 Baxter Road, the main houses are pretty far apart. There, there's, it looks like there's yard, and then the driveway. And the houses actually, unless there's a newer structure than what is on GIS, the houses are not lined right up. They're Yeah.
Yep, I saw it. I know. I'm good. Do you want to say this?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Susan Golden has her hand raised.
Okay, and then I think we're going to, we'll let her speak, and then I think we're going to see if there's anyone else who wants to speak. And then we'll probably close the public hearing and move on, unless the board has any other questions. Mrs. Golden?
I just wanted to comment. I was referring, not the density from our main house, but from our cottage, because these structures are getting built right around there as well. So, that was my concern. And I need to go teach my class right now. So, thank you for the time today.
Okay, thank you. It does not appear to me from the plans that the cottage that is shown on the GIS is anywhere near what's being proposed, but can you, can, is that true?
That's correct.
Okay.
Cottage is back by where the, their cottage is back by where our cottage, which is not being changed at all, is, so.
Right. And those are actually closer than the houses would be.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you for clarifying. Okay. Is there anyone else that has anything else they want to add about this one, or any further questions from the board to either the audience in the room, or to Attorney Reed, before we close the public hearing? No, seeing none. Okay, could I get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All right. Alisa makes that motion. Jim seconds. The voting board is all members at the table, Bobby, Jim, myself, Alisa, and Joe. So, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. So, the public hearing is closed. We can move on to deliberation. Just so we know where, where we might be headed. The findings for this would be that granting the proposed relief pursuant to Bylaw Section 139, Section 33A, 1A, is consistent with the finding that the proposed alterations are not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing, non-conforming structure to the neighborhood, and are within the spirit and intent of the bylaw. The proposed conditions are, "The proposed alteration and expansion shall be in substantial compliance with the proposed conditions shown upon Exhibit A. The project shall be completed in substantial conformity with the plans approved in connection with certificate of appropriateness, HTC, sorry, number, HTC 2025-07-12904. There shall be no exterior construction allowed between Memorial Day and Labor Day of any given year for the work contemplated herein, and there shall be no further alterations or expansion of the structure without further relief from this board." Jim and Bobby, did you guys look at the GIS?
Yeah.
You did?
Yes.
No, this?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Just for context. How's everyone feeling? Does anyone?
I'm going to vote no.
Okay.
I do think it's substantial. I do think it's more detrimental, so. Just because of the ground cover or subvert. I do think the density makes it-
You mean the massing? Because it's, it's only, it's the the density to the neighborhood is not, I don't think is, is-
Well, it's definitely more.
Yeah, no, it's, it's more, but I, I don't think it's out of, out of step with the, with the neighborhood that it's, that it's in.
Okay.
Yeah. But that's me.
I, I could see myself to voting for this. And, you know, this, I know, massing and density seems to be a term of art, the architectural word, which I always struggle with, because to me, they're very similar, but I understand the difference in this context. And there's some assurance that the HTC takes this detrimental to the neighborhood thing into account when it's reviewing, you know, comparing it to other structures. So, I, I'm comfortable with this situation.
I like that it's not going up higher than, did you say 20 feet?
It was 22.
22. I think it does work with the existing situation. Sorry. I don't have a problem with it. I'll vote in favor of it. I'm I'm 80% in favor of it, so that's a yes vote.
Okay.
I would support it as well. I think, as was pointed out, where this, although the side that is being raised is closest to the neighbor's property, it's not anywhere near adjacent to any of their structures. I appreciate the sightline photographs. And I, the, her comment about, this opens the door to everybody doing non-conforming lots. I don't see that that really has any bearing on this.
Okay.
I just, I want to point out one thing about the neighbor's concern about construction. Something carried for, from Ed Tool. You know, they built their structure.
Yeah.
And then this neighbor was okay with it. You can't, you can't, you know, I don't take that into account.
Yeah.
Make that point.
And, and we're doing the seasonal mutation.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah.
Does, does, do we know if the Golden woman lives here year-round? If she doesn't, it won't bother her?
Does anybody in Sconset?
Well, her address is San Francisco, California, so.
Okay, so she, she won't have to listen to any construction.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's just what, that's where her tax bills go. That's just on the GIS, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. So, sorry, Jim has made the motion. Alisa seconds. And the voting members are the members sitting at the table. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, so that carries four to one.
Thank you very much.
Yep, you're welcome. Thank you, everyone, for your time and your input. Okay, so our next application is
Susan?
Yep.
I, I think I did the plot plan for this for the closing.
Okay.
I don't know, does it eliminate me?
I don't know, Tori is, do you know if he did the, Joe did the plot plan? It doesn't eliminate you unless someone has an issue. I mean-
I'm not saying for that fault, but that is not the mortgage.
No, yeah, okay. I'm fine.
I mean, it's, it's, this is for a pool, so it's, it's more of the, you know, if the, it's, this is-
It's more performative.
Well, I mean, we have the directive of if they meet certain conditions, we shall issue a permit, so.
Well, I just wanted to-
Yeah, no, I appreciate the disclosure. And as long as the applicant doesn't have an issue, then it's, I don't think it's a, okay. You're, I mean, you're not working on the pool. You're not currently working on it. You're not doing anything like that. Yeah. Okay. So, so I don't think I finished introducing it. It's 2025-0027-6 Totemo. Totemo LLC, 6 Totemo Way. John Brusher and Alisa? I think, 1, 2, 3. Yes, we do. So, John Brusher and Alisa Allen were conflicted out. The application's being presented by Victoria Ewing of Link 02554. Lisa, do you need a minute to get settled? All right. Sure, sure. All right, as soon as-
Do you have new information?
That was for the last one. Yeah. You have a copy of this, or someone for the file?
Yes, I have it.
Okay. Just get rid of that. This, yes, is, yep. We'll just stumble a little bit. We'll just, we'll just, we'll just muddle through. All right, so Tori, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. Pretty straightforward. It's a pool in a VR district, which requires zoning board compliance and approval. We meet all of the distances that are required, both to the pool and the pool equipment. We've provided the HTC approval, and the lot has very significant vegetation surrounding it already. We've included some photos of that for you as well. And those will remain in perpetuity.
Does the issue still provoke?
It should be.
Oh, yeah.
Is there any proposed lighting, other than the safety lighting?
Nope.
Okay.
And you, are normal conditions. Do you have any issues with those?
Nope, not at all. Yes.
And where is the mechanical equipment?
It is, there's a cabana in the southeast corner, and it's right to the outside of there. There's a four-by-eight square.
Is that where the little, like, the bump out in the back?
It's, if you're looking at the plan, it's all the way to the left.
Yeah, behind the cabana?
To the side. You see it?
Yeah, I think so.
The four-by-eight. I think it's got the dimensions on it?
It doesn't have dimensions.
Not on the HTC plan. Maybe it's on the survey.
Sorry, on the survey that Nikki has up on the screen, if that's helpful.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, I see it.
Do you see it there?
Yeah, I see it now.
Exactly.
It looks like on the HTC approval, it was behind, maybe, and then you-
I think it may have been originally, yeah. This is what we're proposing.
So, then it looks like is the pool equipment, if I'm looking at the GIS, it's going to be closest to the driveway that goes to 253 Osprey Way? Or do I have that?
I think it's going to-
Oh, no, there's Osprey Way there.
It's on the other side.
It's to the interior of the lot?
It's closest to 8324.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
But, yeah, 57 feet away from-
Okay. That's, I was just curious about where it was.
And 21 feet from the back property line.
Thank you, Lisa.
Did we have any mail on this one? Does anyone have any questions for Tori? No. Is there anyone in the audience who wanted to speak on this one, or anyone online? No. Okay. Okay. Then we could move to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so Jim makes that motion. Lisa seconds. All those in favor of closing the public, public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, for the, for the decision, "The finding would be that the pool use and associated mechanicals are in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw, and provided that the project meets the following criteria: A, the lot must meet the minimum lot size for the district; and B, the side and rear yard setbacks of 20 feet shall apply to the residential swimming pool and associated mechanical equipment. The board further finds that the proposal has met the standards, as stated in the bylaw, for the following reasons: The combined lots contain 20,517 square feet of area in excess of the minimum required of 20,000 square feet, and the pool and associated pool equipment will be sighted in excess of 20 feet from any lot line." Our standard conditions for pools would be, would apply. I can read all of them if we want to, or, okay. So, A through, A through F would apply, as written in the staff report, and will become a part of the decision. If no one has any additions, we could entertain a motion to approve the-
Madam Chair, I just want to use this, I don't have an issue with it, but the, I don't, I don't know how much we get the zoning administrator involved in deciding anymore, do we?
We've talked about this, about whether or not some of these pools that meet all the requirements, just-
I just think, you know, this is a good example, as long as these standards- I just think, you know, this is a good example, as long as these standards are met, do we really need to have it come before the board? Or can we consider, for future approvals, authorizing the zoning administrator?
Yeah, we can, I mean, yeah, I think in the beginning, it was, when we first started doing this, it was more important. We had a lot of neighbors who would show up. I think that if we could make that determination, you know, if we got one that had a ton of mail on it, that was in a pretty densely packed area of the VR district, then maybe it would come before us, but I would not have an issue, as long as the conditions were met and they, everyone was agreeable, I would think the zoning administrator could drop the decisions. Oh, Billy has, okay, Billy?
What say you, Billy?
Billy's gonna totally shoot me down right now.
No, no, not at all, not at all, Madam Chair. I was gonna say, I can bring this up to the director of planning. This would require an amendment to the zoning bylaw, so it would have to be handled in that manner, I believe, to adjust the bylaw to, because right now, the ZA can do pre-existing non-conforming structure, so something would have to be added for VR pool. The only concern I have, once it goes to a ZA, almost, although, no, I mean, it would be under the same, I, you know, currently, when I get a ZA application, I can make the determination on whether or not I'm gonna do it, or it's gonna go to the board, so it actually could be a really good idea, I think.
Yeah, I think we would definitely want to leave that flexibility for both, for everyone, right? That if, if the ZA thought that it was something that needed more discussion, or there were a lot of people who were either, you know, against it or had comments about it, that it could go to the board, but yeah. So, I, do you need us to, well, let's deal with this first, but yeah, if you could talk to the planning director and see if it's something that might be supported, and then we can address it in other business at a later meeting?
Yeah, perfect. We can put it on to actually have a discussion about it.
Okay, awesome. Okay, so, for this application, sorry, did someone make a motion?
I made the motion.
All right, so Lisa made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
And Jim seconds. Okay, again, it's gonna be 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, sitting at the table. So, all those in favor of approving the relief as granted, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So, next we have application 2025-0028. Does someone want to go around and grab Alisa? And John, I guess.
Thank you, Tori.
Sorry, 2025-0028, Jim Conroy and Roberta W. Conroy. 18 Matasham Valley Road. Attorney Rick Bodett is presenting for the applicant. Let's just, can you just, let's just wait till Alisa and John get back. Oops. Rick, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Rick Bodett for the applicants, Jim and Roberta Conroy. The property is located at 18 Matasham Valley Road. It's in the Lug III zoning district. It's conforming in all respects with the exception of lot size, and that's just by virtue of the erosion that has happened. It now has, it started with over 120,000 square feet, it now has 92,346 square feet. There's a house and cottage and shed on the property, and the relief we're seeking is a variance to allow the owners to move the existing house, existing house, within the front yard setback in order to retreat from erosion. Cottage would be moved as well, septic as well. The cottage would conform to the front yard setback. The dwelling, the main dwelling, would be as close as 11 feet from the property line, and that's the front porch. The actual foundation would be closer to 20 feet away from the property line. The property has eroded over 60 feet, I think 64, 65 feet, the last eight years.
May I interrupt? I'm so sorry.
Sure.
I just want to do full disclosure. I helped develop and design this house, but not for these people. These people bought it from the people I worked for. I don't have any relation to these people, but I was involved with the project before they owned it. I don't think it will affect my opinion, but I'm just putting that out there, and if you, for some reason, don't want me on it, say so.
Fine to have you on it. I think, I wouldn't be surprised if maybe Lisa's office worked on it too. I think Ed Tool built this.
Ed did, yeah.
He did.
Yeah, it was a Matt McKechnan design, and I was the designer, yeah.
Yeah. Anyway, thank you for mentioning that. As I was mentioning, it has eroded over 60 feet in the last eight years. The septic is now within 100 feet of the coastal bank, and obviously, we'll have to be moved as well. The house is now 114 feet, and it was approximately 180 feet in 2017, when they bought this property. I think we meet the standard for the variance in that, owing to the soil conditions and topography based on the erosion on the site, they have to retreat from the bank, and requiring them to be within that 35-foot front yard setback would be a substantial hardship to the applicant. They really only want to do this once, obviously. They also have, their septic is gonna be moved out of the 100-foot buffer considerably, and be as close to the back of the house as it can be. So, that's, that's the application before you, and I'm happy to answer any questions I can.
Where's the traveled way?
Oh, good, thank you for asking that question, because that was in our application. The traveled way, while, while Matasham Valley Road is right in front of the property-
No, you understand that.
A road is right in front of the property, as you can see. You can see the traveled way is the dotted line above there. So, it's, you know, it actually will give the appearance of it being, you know, 40-something feet away from the actual roadway, so.
No, my thoughts were, I would move it more.
Yeah.
Well, it's gonna keep on eroding, if traveled way's up there.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean-
Why not go for another 10, put it right on the line?
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, that's a good point. I don't know, you know, I don't, I don't know why they didn't propose that, but, but again, it's a, it's a harder application in front of all you guys. I think they're gonna want-
A used thing to, because you'd have to walk, you'd have to landscape the traveled way, then.
So, I think we have done-
People probably already do, I assume.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, we, we have done something like that, Joe, and, yeah, I think it was on Baxter, where the people-
Yeah, Baxter Road, I know we did a few, yeah.
Where the people got some kind of lease, or easement, or rent, something, permission from the town to go into the roadway layout.
It was in the road.
In the roadway, I did a couple of those.
Yeah, so, but, you know, if these-
You're saying you move, you get a little more time.
Yeah.
Because you're probably gonna get it, so.
Yeah.
Well, if the board, if that's something the board is inclined to grant, I think we may have to renotice. I leave that up to Billy, but we could continue, and, you know, if the majority of the board wants to do that, I can ask if that's-
I mean, given that you have this traveled way, and it does, I agree with Joe, that I would be, you know, in these sorts of circumstances, personally, I, as long as it works with the, with the neighborhood and how we can do it, like, allowing someone to move as far forward as they can, as they physically can, I support that. So, if they, if your clients were interested in going further, or even talking to the town about it, I, I don't think, I don't think, historically, the board has looked, been too hard on that.
Madam Chair, through you.
Yeah.
Rick, when, when do they think they're gonna do the work? Is it gonna be this winter, or is it gonna be a year from now?
You know, I don't know, actually.
So, for what it's worth, I'm in the same camp as Susan.
Okay.
I also think that if you wanted to go to zero, you'd have to renotice.
Yeah.
So, I guess what I'm, what I'd say is, like, you know, if you were desperate to get it?
Yeah.
Like, today?
We don't have HTC approval, so we're not desperate today. That much I know.
Yeah. So, maybe continue, and then you could have a conversation with them and tell, you know, I mean, I, I think, given our past decisions, and given the town's position with, with allowing people to move forward, I think zero wouldn't be a crazy ask.
Or whatever you can get away with with the building.
Whatever.
I mean, but, but I think, you know, not to speak for the board, I think you can sort of read the tenor of the board.
And I think the board agrees with, with all of these, it seems like we have in the past with all of these people that come forward who need this type of relief, like, we understand you only want to do it once. I mean, this is not a project you want to do, and then 10 years later have to undertake again, so.
Right, I appreciate that.
Yeah. But, but that's up to you. We can, we can move forward today, or you can always come back and modify if you want it.
I guess I'd like to hear from Alisa or Lisa, since it requires four votes anyway.
I mean, I don't have an issue either way. I mean, I think, I think it'd be nice to maintain the 35 feet of the traveled way, just because that's the perceived travel way, and that's what the perceived front yard setback is.
Right.
And whatever that gives you, you know, I think I'm comfortable with.
So, am I, might it be a thought, because the stairs project out so far off the front, maybe you do like a friendship stair or something else that doesn't shoot you straight out?
Right.
Right.
You don't have to landscape as much in the roadway.
That's not a zoning recommendation, but at least it will only take you out from projecting out like three and a half feet, and you go down both sides, or one side.
Yeah.
That way, you're not standing in the road when you walk out your front.
That does stick out over 10 feet, yeah.
Yeah.
Wow.
Okay, well, why don't-
But I would be in agreement with allowing it to be closer.
Okay, thank you.
Further.
Why don't I continue then, and talk to the client, and if we need to renotice, if they want to go closer, which I assume they'd at least want to go a bit closer, we'll renotice and come back, if that's all right.
Who controls the private road?
It's on Lambank property. So, there is, that is one consideration, is it's not, it's not out of the question. They could move it to the roadway. I don't know why they would ever do that, but I think they'll probably just wait for the houses to fall in and change the road farther away eventually, but.
Okay, so, why don't we, unless, is there anyone who wanted to speak about this one in the audience or online? No. Okay. So, would someone want to make a motion to continue?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
So, Lisa, Alisa, and, will everybody, will anybody be missing in December?
No.
I'll be here.
I'll be here.
I'll be here. Okay, so, so we'll do Lisa, Alisa, Joe, myself, and John as the board, right?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so all those in favor of a continuance, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
I didn't say it either. Okay, so, that carries, and-
Thanks so much, everyone.
Yeah, we'll see you in December. Okay. I think that's all she wrote for today. Oh, sorry. Yes, I do. Okay, so, Billy, do you want to update us on the, on the public, having a public, are we doing a public hearing today on the current ZBA fee schedule?
We have it listed as a public hearing, so you, you can open the item up for public comment, and there appears to be one person online, I don't know who's in the room. After that, you can close, comment, and vote.
Okay, so, section six of our agenda today is public hearing on the current ZBA fee schedule, including potential updates or revisions, so. Well, is there anyone in the audience who wanted to speak about the proposed fee schedule? The heck? All right, so we can close that public hearing and then discuss, or we should take a vote to do that, so does anyone, would someone?
I'll say the case.
Oh, sorry, Jim, I didn't, okay. So, Jim made a motion, Lisa seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, as discussed in prior meetings, the current ZBA application fee has not been updated in several years. Staff conducted a detailed analysis of the actual costs incurred by the town in processing ZBA applications. This analysis consisted of, consisted of staff time, administrative overhead, and other related expenses. Based on these findings, staff recommends increasing the base ZBA application fee to $1,000, which more accurately reflects the true cost of reviewing and processing a typical application. In addition to, in addition to the fee adjustment, staff is also proposing a change in how mailing costs are handled. Moving forward, mailing expenses, which are processed through Pitney Bowes, will be billed separately to the applicant rather than being included in the base fee. How does everyone feel about that? Any objections? Yep?
450.
450.
And that includes all the mailings?
Yes.
Oh, you know, you're right, you're right.
What, you mean having to pay for the mailing?
Well, the mailings is probably 60, 70 bucks.
That depends, depends on the property.
That depends on the property, but, but like-
Madam Chair, I'm not getting everyone's comments, so just make sure you're speaking on the mic so I can hear you.
Yeah, I turned my mic off, sorry.
So, yeah, so, I, we talked about this a couple of times, I can't remember exactly what, there was some comment about what other towns charge, and, and the amount of work that staff does for these applications, so personally, I support the, the increase, and I support the separate postage charge.
I, I do as well, but I think it's gonna be a little tougher to try to capture that fee after the fact, to then bill the applicant and say, hey, thank you for, thank you for your fee, and here's your, here, and here's your decision, and we also need a check for $370 for mailings.
Well, can you make it a, perhaps, during the hearing? You don't get the hearing if you have-
Yeah, you don't get, you don't get your decision unless you've paid your-
Madam Chair, can I interrupt here?
Yeah, go ahead, or someone.
I would, I would, this is gonna be set up very similar to the planning board, so when you submit an application, you'll submit your application fee, and you'll submit a separate check at that point in time for your abutter's fee, which is $1.56 per abutter. So, that's all worked out well ahead of time, and we would not accept your application if you don't have the abutter's check as well.
Okay.
It's only $1.56 each, Billy?
Yeah, it's 70, 78 cents each direction. We don't do-
You don't do a return receipt, then?
No.
No, we no longer do that. We, you know, we've had a lot of discussions about that, and at the end of the day, we follow the statutory requirement. Staff internally sends these documents out. The certified mail, all it allows me to do is say, I told you so. I'm quite comfortable telling someone that I mailed it on a date, when I mailed it on a date. I don't need a certified mail to say that for me.
Can I just comment on that? We seem, I don't know what the procedure is, or what the law is, but we do seem to have more and more abutters claim that they didn't receive it, and I know it's not on you or anything, it's just, it would be nice, you're right, it's more than an issue with the post office.
Well, I think also, it goes to the abutters, or the abutters home, the owner of the property, which isn't always the person that's the abutter, so it sometimes will go to a lawyer or some other place who doesn't pay attention to it.
But then that's, again, I agree with Billy, that's not on the town. If you, if you have your attorney or someone else acting on your behalf for your property, they need to be acting on your behalf of your property, that's-
And sometimes we get returned ones for the HTC, and we just keep them, if they come back undeliverable.
Yeah.
Keep them in the file, so we can show we mailed it to the right address.
Yep. Okay, so, does anyone have any objection to raising the fee?
I think it should be more.
Okay.
I think it should be like 1,500. I actually think it should be 2,000.
That sounds so expensive.
The thousand dollars is nothing, really, it's nothing.
That makes me uncomfortable.
I think jumping from 450 to 2,000 is a big jump. Now, if you tell us we want to go to 2,000 this time next year?
Yeah, but that's not...
But let's do it in increments.
Is there a way, I mean, the HCC does it by scale of the project, but that's hard to...
Yeah.
No, that's too... I think it's such a small amount of money compared to most of these projects. The 400 square feet they're gonna put on Baxter Road, that's gonna cost $400,000.
I mean, the...
Come on. And extra 2 grand, that's nothing.
You could also say a thousand, you could also say $1,000 for a special permit, and 2,000 for a variance.
I don't know. I don't like that, because a variance is so much harder to get, and then, I don't know.
It's so what?
I don't know, it just makes, I think...
Did you finish law school?
Of course I did!
Did you go to the classes where they toughen you up?
I wish Rick Bodett was here, because we went to law school together. He can, he can, he can vouch for me.
Nikki was saying that the variance is more work on the staff's part.
Oh, it is?
Yes, but we went through the whole deliberation with the planning director.
Oh, you did, okay.
She just wasn't in favor of making one higher than the other, because you want it to be like...
Yeah.
You didn't want to deter people, like to say, oh, an appeal is 2,000, to kind of deter them from not doing it.
Yeah, and we can also revisit this. Like, if we voted today, and then staff comes back and says, you know, next year, or whatever.
Yeah, that's just, that's, it's in front of us now. We should try to get as much...
I said, we do it at 1,000, and we doesn't have any...
Or, Joe, you can make a, you can make a motion to do a 2,000, and we'll see what people say.
Well, I'd like to see somebody nodding their head, you know.
How about 1,200?
How about 1,500?
Let's make a deal.
Is this... Will zoning admin, will it be the same fee for zoning admin review?
Yes.
Oh, wait. We haven't done, Billy, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, keep in mind, not every applicant is, you know, affluent, and, you know, every scenario can be different. I think making it cost prohibitive might be troubling. I mean, we are making a hundred and some odd percent increase in the price, which is just reflective of the fact that it hasn't changed in 15 years.
But that's the problem. That's why the percentage has to be so much, is because we didn't change it often enough.
Yeah, but I agree with Billy, like, we're not trying to make money. We're just trying to make it so the town isn't like paying to cover the cost. So, if that's what staff and the planning director feel comfortable with, like, I don't have any research or anything.
I'd like to ask one question about, did you just use direct salaries? Or did you do direct salaries plus fika futasuta, vacations, that kind of overhead? Is that included in, or just base salary? Or you don't know? You don't remember?
I think we based it on actual time that's spent.
And then times your base salary?
Yes. I mean, really, we don't, we make hourly, so it's fairly easy to figure out.
I know, but what it costs the town is 1.4 times the minimum, more than that. With the benefits, days off, and all that. So, it should be at least 1,400. It should.
And then, Billy, I forgot, I don't think we didn't look at the ZA. So, ZA won't increase right now, right?
I don't necessarily think the ZA needs to increase at the moment. I think, I think, you know, when I review those, it's not a lot different from reviewing any application. But what's not involved with ZA is the abutters notifications, the notice. You know, there's a lot of extra work that goes into a public hearing versus a non-public.
But don't you have to mail the ZA decision to all the abutters afterwards?
Yes, you mail the ZA decision to the abutters afterwards. So, I definitely think, I think we could definitely include the Pitney Bowes on that aspect of it.
And then, so, just, if you do have a ZA decision that you, or application that you decide this one needs to go before the board, then they, then they have to pay the difference, they pay the difference and do the full application, whatever they need to do, correct?
Yeah, typically, I have an applicant bring an application here for a ZA. They don't bring it right to the clerk, because I need to be able to see it and tell them whether or not I'll do it. Otherwise, I mean, the difference in a ZA and a ZBA is if I don't act in 30 days, it's an automatic denial. So, it behooves the applicant to bring it in, let's discuss it. And I always try to also, I mean, with ZAs, I try to make sure they do HDC first, because that's a, that's a big vetting process for any project.
And what's their, what's the ZA fee now?
Hang on one second. I believe it's 450. I believe it's the same as a, hang on.
Yeah. I think that, I think that should be 750.
Okay.
I think it's 300, Billy.
Is it 300? I'm trying to get to the...
It should go up, the same percentage that the other one is going up. Although, we started ZAs fairly, I mean, they're not that old, they're not, you know, it hasn't been 17 years.
Okay, so, what do we think?
Yes, it's currently listed at 300.
Yeah, so that should be 750, and maybe we should go up a little bit.
1,500? Why don't we do, why don't we do 1,500 for the zoning board, 750 for the ZA, and they both pay the Pitney Bowes?
I'll second the motion.
Perfect. And what is, what is, what do they, what did Billy, what did you guys propose?
1,000.
1,000.
They didn't consider the overhead?
Yeah, but the over, yeah, so, I agree with that, the one, if it's 1.4 times.
If you're an employee, when you add in vacation health insurance.
Matching social security.
But do we...
Whatever.
Well, that's cost to the town, I mean...
And if we find that it's dissuading anybody from...
Well, can't we always waive the fee? Like, you can always forgive, right? Like, we can always waive the fee if somebody...
I think that's tough, though, because you come in, it's like, oh, I'm doing something on my house.
Yeah, yeah, all right.
By next week, they go and put on the market for...
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
I just think, I'd like to go with what the staff is...
I'm good with, I do think that ZA should be risk, should get, be more expensive, but I'm...
So, we could stay with the 1,000, do 1,000, and do 500? The ZA is like half? I don't know. I mean, I have no idea how much work it is. Like, Billy, do you think it's half of the amount of work to do a ZA?
Oh, can you hear me? I liked where you were going with the 750 on the ZA. I think 1,000 for the regular meeting, 750, because it used to be 450 and 300. So, I think that, that mixes together a little better.
That makes Joe a little happier.
Okay. Not much, though.
I'm always in.
Right, no, yeah, it just, I feel like when we talked about this the first time, other towns, like, the amount that they were charging was way more than we charged, or even contemplated charging. But I agree with you, I don't want it to be a deterrent.
I don't think it would be, I mean, I'm, you know, I know I'm talking out of my mouth. I don't think $1,000 or 1,500 is gonna deter anybody, because they're spending a lot of money to do whatever project they do.
How much did it cost to have Rick Bodett here tonight, or Sarah Alge here tonight?
I don't like to count other people's money.
Well, I don't care, I don't care, I don't care what you're saying. I'm just saying, you're gonna spend $5,000 for an attorney. So, $1,000 filing fee doesn't sound like much.
It's not our business.
Yeah, so... And speaking as an attorney, we have a lot of flexibility for like, how, you know, like, you can forgive and not, right? Like...
Or charge them double, whatever.
No, come on, don't, we already have a bad reputation, come on.
You're giving up your time for free now.
Yeah, I know.
I just, I don't, I don't know if I'm comfortable with analyzing it this way, you know. We could do that for everything. Our parking ticket should be $300, if you looked at the salaries of the police department, all that, you know. Like, it's just one way of looking at it, to make sure it's in line, but I don't know.
So, then I think what you're saying, Jim, supports...
I do.
750 a thousand.
750 a thousand, because that's what's been recommended from the planning department.
I'll second it.
Okay. So, we're all sitting here, let's just all say our voices. Who is in favor of the, do we make, who made a motion?
I did.
Lisa made a motion, and Lisa, you seconded. In favor of increasing the ZBA application to $1,000 with the separate postage, as recommended by staff, and 750 to the ZA applications with a separate payment for the postage, as seems to be agreed to by staff. Say aye.
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 Okay, that passes. All right, so then we could take, oh, we just have our new calendar for next year. So, take a look at the meeting dates, and if there are dates that people know they're gonna be away, or there's gonna be a bunch of us away, we can reschedule if we need to.
They don't call on any school advice.
There were a couple of days where you were later than the second Thursday.
Oh, really?
Late in the year.
Sometimes it's, well, we try to do, like, October, we work around the week that has Veterans Day. Sometimes, like, this week, was Veterans Day this week? This week has gone so, yeah, so sometimes we move around based on different holidays, but... But, okay, so I guess we can, this is, this is the calendar, but if anybody, if you can take some time, look at your calendar, and when we come back in December, if anybody's like, absolutely cannot do this, and there's some reason why, and we think we would all be better off moving it, we can, we can take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Lisa and John made the motion and seconded it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're done. Thank you, everyone.